Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Maryville Town Council meeting for today, Tuesday, November 12th, at 6:30 PM. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and then remain standing afterwards for our invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Let's pray. Oh, God, our Father, our hearts are tuned to the concept of gratitude. Fathers, we enter this season of Thanksgiving, we do so recognizing the blessings you have given to us. Blessings of protection, blessings of being loved and cared for, blessings of being heard, blessings of being able to share in the goodness of so many things. Father, we pray tonight for our own hearts to be focused upon giving you that gratitude, for you are our God. And thus, while, Father, we pray for those men and women in this room tonight, those who lead this community, we thank you for their selfless attitudes and for the sacrifices they make. So, Father, we plead for wisdom and guidance in all things. In Jesus' name, amen. Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Mr. January, could you do the roll call, please?
That's Mr. President. Vice President Neal.
Here.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
Present.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Present.
Councilwoman Uselak.
Here.
Councilman Pettit.
Here.
Councilwoman Hardaway.
Here.
President Bella.
Here.
Seven present.
All present, thank you. Moving on tonight to petitions, communications, acknowledgements, and remonstrations. We did receive a letter from NDOT approving funding for the 2024-2 Community Crossings Matching Grant Fund. I'd like to ask Mr. January to read that into the record, and as I said, it is good news for the town.
November the 7th, 2024, Maryville, I'll just read the letter. Dear Rick Bella, the Indiana Department of Transportation has completed the review and selection of projects for funding in 24-2 Community Crossing Matching Grant Fund. Your community has preliminarily been awarded $1.5 million in community crossing matching grant funds based upon your estimates from your project application. A community crossings matching grant award letter will be included in the local roads and bridges matching grant agreement as attachment B. The community crossing matching grant funds, which are administered by NDOT, will be used for funding up to 50% of the construction of your project or the purchase of materials. These grant dollars will enable you to build and improve Indiana's infrastructure. The state of Indiana looks forward to partnering with all Hoosier communities, both urban and rural, to invest in road and bridge infrastructure projects. Improvement to local roads and bridges will bring about economic development, create jobs, strengthen local transportation networks for all of Indiana. Sincerely, Eric J. Holcomb, Governor.
Thank you, Mr. January. Steve and staff, thank you. Good job on submitting the projects and for getting these approved. This is like a bucket of money that the town could certainly use. Thank you. Good job. We also received a, we did a letter of support for the city of Hobart as the hosting site of the proposed convention center. Mr. January, would you read that into the record, please?
Dear Lake County Commissioners, on behalf of the town of Maryville, I am pleased to express our support for the proposed Hobart, Indiana location as the best choice among the options for the new convention center to serve Lake County. After a comprehensive review of the unique benefits offered by each potential site, we firmly believe that Hobart presents unmatched advantages for our community and Lake County as a whole. Hobart's location strategically positioned with its easy access to major highways, proximity to I-65 and US Route 30, is a unique advantage that would attract visitors from across the region and beyond. This strategic accessibility would make Hobart an ideal hub, maximizing the convention center's appeal to many potential clients and attendees. Additionally, Hobart and nearby Maryville boast a thriving business district and hospitality sector that can easily support a convention center by offering many nearby eateries, hotels, and shopping choices not currently available at the Geary location. The added economic stimulus from a Hobart-based convention center would significantly benefit the city of Hobart and the entire Lake County region, reinforcing our area as a preferred destination for events and gatherings. Furthermore, establishing the convention center in Hobart aligns well with broader convention development goals. Hobart's commitment to a sustainable growth, investment in public infrastructure, and a community engagement make it an excellent candidate to partner with Lake County to foster its continued prosperity and appeal. Considering these strengths, we firmly believe that selecting Hobart as a site for the convention center will result in the most significant economic and social benefits to Lake County. Thank you for considering our recommendation, and we look forward to seeing the positive impact this development will bring to our region. Signed, Rick Bella, President, Town Council of Maryville.
Thank you. So, once and for all, is it Hobart or Hobart?
Hobart.
Hobart.
We're Maryland.
And it's Hoosiers, Mr. January. Thank you, Eric.
Some people say Bowler makers.
There you go. Moving on tonight, we do have decorating winners for our trunk-or-treat awards, and I'll call on Vice President Neal and Chaz Riley to approach the podium and do those presentations.
Okay, so this is for our trunk-or-treat, so just to give you a little information on it, we had over 1,000 people in attendance for the trunk-or-treat. There were more than 40 organizations handing out candy. The vast majority of the organizations were participating for the first time. During the evening, we had costume contests, and winners were selected in adult and child categories. We had online voting, and the results from our online voting, we did get a first and a second place winner. So, our first-place winner for the trunk-or-treat goes to Danny the Groomer. If you guys remember, he had the Dalmatians, the dogs dressed up like Dalmatians. He's the first-place winner with over 30% of the votes he did receive. And the second-place winner is 3D. They came in with 25% of the votes. I don't see Danny the groomer here, but 3D, are you present? Just come up to the podium. Come up. 3D often participates with a lot of our activities. They participated last year, and they participated also with the Christmas tree lighting, so they've been very active with participating with things with the town. So, this is your certificate for the second place that you won for the trunk-or-treat.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving along to the consent agenda tonight, we have the accounts payable registered voucher approval for November 12th, also the register summary for ARP purchases for November 12th, the approval of the town council meeting minutes of October 22nd, the approval of the ARP meeting minutes of October 30th and November 4th. We have two Bosco reduction letters also on the agenda. It's your pleasure, council.
So moved.
Mr. President, I'll second. Councilwoman Uselak, for discussion. I want to have one, two items taken off, Margie.
Yes.
The two Bosco items, we talked with Michael.
Definitely.
And this is in advance, Mr. President. Dean and Barbara White Community Center is having a meeting next Thursday night at 5:00, and I've asked Michael to put this back on so Shawna and Margie and Keisha and I, as a committee, could look at these two requests. So, at this time, Margie, if you'll amend your motion, I'll.
I do. I will amend my motion regarding the Dean.
The consent agenda?
Community Center, the Bosco.
So, we're going to remove those two items from the consent agenda this evening.
Mr. President, I beg your pardon. We have noticed something on the ARPA docket. We're asking that you would pull the matter for Julie Moreno. We think that's a typo, but we're not sure. That seems to be higher than the committee approved.
So, that's vendor number 791 on your pink ARP voucher summary.
Yes.
It amounts $12,700. It's for concrete work.
That is correct. Did you need to add to that at all, Tristana?
I was just going to add that we certainly will look into that for the next meeting and will resubmit. I did look at the APV voucher with Ms., oh, my goodness.
Yeah, the figure doesn't sound right. That's.
Ms. Angela, but I forgot your last name. I'm so sorry. Anyway.
No, that'll give us time to look into it.
And we'll get it resolved.
Mrs. Uselak, would you mind amending your motion again to remove vendor 791 from the ARP voucher?
Okay, I will amend my motion again to remove vendor number 791 from the ARP voucher.
Mr. Pettit, does your second stand?
Yes.
Mr. Svetnov, are we doing this correctly?
Correct.
Any other discussion from the council? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close, same sign. The motion carries. Moving on tonight to declarations and presentations. Mr. January, would you please read the declaration to recognize November 30th as Small Business Yes, sir, please. The Small Business Saturday.
Town of Maryville Declaration of the State of Indiana. The Town Council of Maryville recognizes Small Business Saturday, whereas the Maryville, the town government of Maryville, Indiana celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. Whereas, according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 34.7 million small businesses in the United States representing 99.7% of firms with paid employees. Small businesses are responsible for over 61% of the net new jobs created since 1995, and small businesses employ almost 46% of the employees in the private sector of the United States. Whereas, 68% of every dollar spent at small businesses in the US stays in the local community, and every dollar spent at small businesses creates an additional 48 cents in local business activity as a result of employees and local businesses purchasing local goods and services. And whereas, 59% of US consumers are aware of Small Business Saturday, shopped or ate at a small independently-owned retailer or restaurant on Small Business Saturday in 2023. And whereas, the town of Maryville supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities. And whereas, advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Town Council of Maryville, Indiana, hereby proclaim Saturday, November 30th, 2024, as Small Business Saturday, marking its 15th anniversary. We urge all citizens to join in celebrating and supporting our local businesses, recognizing the vital role they play in our community. Let's take this day to spread awareness, educate others, and actively support Maryville small businesses. By choosing to shop small businesses throughout the holiday season, we not only strengthen our local economy, but contribute to the well-being of our nation, our state, and, most importantly, our hometown of Maryville, Indiana.
Thank you, Mr. January. Council, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, second by Councilor Sheaf, for approval of Small Business Saturday declaration. Hearing none, Mr. January, roll call, please.
Vice President Neal.
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Uselak.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hardaway.
Yes.
President Bella.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on tonight, our next item is the Declaration for National Apprenticeship Week. I'm honored to introduce Nikki Rodriguez. Is Nikki here tonight? Would you please come to the podium? She is the Director of READY Northwest Indiana. READY stands for Regional Educators and Employers Alliance for Developing Youth. Located in Northwest Indiana, it was established in 2010. Their governing body is the Center for Workforce Innovations. Mrs. Rodriguez, I'll let you tell us a little bit about your organization and yourself, and then you can read the declaration.
Absolutely. I am the new Director of READY Northwest Indiana. We are a consortium that was started back in about 2010. What we do is we pull together educators, employers, and community partners to help develop the youth in seven counties. So, we have 42 school districts. We recently were approved with a career coaching grant, so we will be assisting those students who are juniors and seniors with some career coaching sessions. We pulled in six community partners in that. So, I will go ahead and start.
Super. Thank you.
Yep. The town of Maryville, if I can speak correctly, state of Indiana, and the Town Council of Maryville recognizes National Apprenticeship Week. Whereas, READY Northwest Indiana has hosted Skills Trades Day in Lake County with the Construction Advancement Foundation for the last seven years. And whereas, they will be hosting their eighth annual Skills Trades Day on November 19th, 2024, at the Lake County Fairgrounds. And whereas, the town of Maryville, Indiana's largest town, recognizes November 18th through the 22nd as National Apprenticeship Week. And whereas, this week is dedicated to celebrating the benefits of apprenticeship programs, which play a vital role in developing our workforce and strengthening our local economy. And whereas, apprenticeships provide invaluable hands-on training and career opportunities for individuals of all backgrounds, enabling them to acquire essential skills while earning a wage. And whereas, these programs are critical for bridging the gap between education and employment, particularly in industries that are facing workforce shortages. And whereas, the town of Maryville recognizes that registered apprenticeship, a proven and industry-driven training model is a key strategy to improving job quality and creating access to good-paying, family-sustaining jobs for all. Starting with youth and young adults while addressing some of our nation's most pressing workforce challenges, such as rebuilding our country's infrastructure, addressing critical supply chain demands, supporting clean energy workforce, modernizing our cybersecurity response, and responding to care for the economy's issues. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the Town Council of Maryville thereby proclaim November 17th through November 23rd, 2024, as National Apprenticeship Week, and thereby urge all citizens in joining and supporting these invaluable hands-on training, supporting career opportunities for our residents. Let's take this workday to spread awareness, educate others, and actively support READY Northwest Indiana. The program will not only strengthen our local economy, but contribute to the well-being of our nation, our state, and, most importantly, our hometown of Maryville, Indiana.
Thank you. Is there a motion, council?
So moved.
My second.
A motion by Mr. Pettit with a second by Ms. Hardaway to approve the Declaration of the, recognizing the week of November 17th through the November 23rd as National Apprenticeship Week. Discussion? Hearing none, Mr. January, please.
Vice President Neal.
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Uselak.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hardaway.
Yes.
President Bella.
Aye.
Seven in favor.
Seven in favor, motion carries. And Eric, did you sign this particular one so we can give her a copy?
I signed them all.
Can we pass down a copy? We have a copy for you for tonight, if you want to take one back to the office.
Yes, I would love that.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Moving on tonight to standing committees, budget and finance, Vice President Neal.
Thank you, President Bella. I don't have a report for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Affairs, Mr. Pettit.
Yes, Mr. President, we have a committee meeting on Thursday, November 14th, at 4:30. Michael has a stack of ordinances that the committee needs to go through.
Street Department, Mrs. Uselak.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Mr. King, our Street Department supervisor, they have been doing street sweeping, leaf pickup, and some patching. Do you have more to add, Steve?
So, we've also, we have a crew out picking up trash. They've been picking up for about two weeks now, trying to get cleaned up a little bit. I do want, so, I was going to say this later, but I'm going to say it now. So, our leafback crews move slow, so the residents have to be patient. They were in Turkey Creek today. One of our employees was struck by a vehicle because a resident of the town wasn't patient and didn't want to wait. Well, this is the result. One of our, one of our employees was struck by a vehicle this afternoon. Chief Yerga was there, first one on the scene. He really wasn't injured. He hit the mirror and hit the side of the vehicle, but he was struck by a vehicle. So, that's not acceptable, and you just, you have to be patient and let us do our jobs. So, that's all I want to say.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Mr. President. That's it.
Thank you very much. Steve, please send our regards to the employee.
I will.
We'll be in touch. Elections, public relations, and town beautification, Vice President Neal.
Thank you, President Bella. The only update, we did not have a meeting on Monday due to the holiday for our gateway signs, so we will reconvene probably next Monday.
Thank you.
And that's all. Thank you.
Environmental Affairs, Mr. Pettit.
Mr. President, I'll defer to Matt and to Vice President Neal under other committees.
Personnel Policy and Employee Benefits, Councilor Hardaway.
Yes, we have received several applications for Parks Director, and so those are under review. Well, they will be under review shortly. Having those packets made for Ms. Marge and Lisa to review. That ends my report.
Thank you. Public Safety, Ms. Hardaway.
I'll defer to Chief Yerga and Chief Neuses during their reports.
Economic Development, whoop, I'm sorry, where did I do that, right? No, Economic Development, Mr. Pettit, I'm sorry.
There will be a redevelopment commission meeting two weeks from tonight at 6 o'clock.
Thank you. Utility Liaison, Ms. Chandler Felton.
No report tonight. President Bella.
Parks and the Dean and Barbara White Community Center, Councilor Pettit.
Mr. President, as I reported earlier with the two Bosco items on the claims list, there is a committee meeting here. I want to make sure everybody, it's changed to here on Thursday, November 21st, at 5 o'clock.
Thank you, Mr. Pettit. Abandoned and blighted properties, Ms. Haynes Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. President. We will have our next court hearing on the third Friday of this month, November 21st, I believe, for abandoned and blighted court at 1:00 PM here in the chambers.
Thank you. About the semi-quintcentennial committee?
Nothing to report at this time. Thank you.
Special Town Projects, Mrs. Neal.
Thank you, President Bella. Our next upcoming event will be the Maryville Tree Lighting at the Dean and Barbara Community Center on December 6th from 5:30 to 7:30. There's information out on Facebook, on the Maryville Town page. They will be able to actually judge the best decorated tree. We'll have another voting system for that as we did last year, and there will also be Santa Claus and little prizes and things for the kids. And thank you, Steve, for.
Is Steve going to help out again this year?
Thank you, Steve, again, for helping us. He knows somebody.
I think he was just recruited.
Yeah, he's been recruited.
And how many did we have show up last year, Mrs. Neal, if I can ask?
I believe we had over 1,500. And last year, we had the five schools participate, so we're branching out to have more participation. We're looking to have the choir come and sing Christmas carols, and so we have a lot more planned to add on to it.
Great.
So, we're looking to have a spectacular event. And then we also have the home decorating contest again for the best decorated home in the town of Maryville. You have to have an application in by December 6th. You can go online and click the link, or you can come down here and submit the application. The online voting will start December 9th through the 20th. And we'll have our judging shortly after that. So, that was a huge event last year for us, too. I think that was one of the ones we saw the most online voting for.
Great.
And that concludes my report.
Very good. Thank you. Is there anything to report, Mrs. Neal, from the Lake County Solid Waste Management District?
Yes, the next meeting is November 21st, that's on Thursday, at 6:00 PM.
Thank you.
And they're also asking that every town have an alternate, just in case, because they've had a huge issue with people being absent. So, I will be seeking one of the counselors to be an alternate.
Okay, fair enough. Northern Indiana Regional Planning Commission, Mrs. Hardaway.
Next meeting, December 5th. Thank you.
All right. Stormwater Management Resources, Mr. Lake.
Thank you. Our project is Healthmore Park. We're deep in the process of value engineering. We anticipate final revisions will be completed within 30 days, then we'll rebid the project. Our project on 69th and Connecticut Street, brimber construction has made significant progress. I anticipate that project will be done within the next three weeks. With regards to Hickory Ridge, our regional flood control project, we got a pre-construction meeting scheduled with Christopher Burke Engineering and Dyer Construction. After that, we'll get a construction schedule finalized, and I anticipate we'll break ground next month. And then with regards to our Hendrick Street drainage analysis and final plans, we had to meet with Lake County Parks Department. They have a wetland mitigation bank near there. Sometimes drainage can be too good, so we met with them, coordinated on our design elements. I think we came up with a really good compromise so that we could have adequate drainage and not impact their wetland mitigation bank. And that's all I have.
Thank you. South Shore Visitors and Convention Authority, I'm pleased to introduce Deanne Dino. She is the President and CEO of the Crossroads Chamber and Maryville's representative at the Visitors Bureau. Deanne.
Thank you, Rick. I just want to share some of our recent statistics in our hotels. Right now, our average daily room rate is $101, which is down 1% from last year at the same time. The hotels have taken in 16 million, 16, or, I'm sorry, 16,616,836. That is up 5.5% from last year at the same time. Our occupancy is 65%, up 0.6% from last year, but please know that our supply is up 8.2%. So, actually, the occupancy is up because we have more supply. Our revenue per occupied room is $67, which is flat from last year, and our demand is 161,000, which is up 6.2% from last year at this time. The South Shore CVA hired Phil Talan as the new President and CEO in his term, or his date was early June. He started in that role. And Phil is really out and about, visiting a lot of local and figureheads in the state and local. He's attended several Indiana Tourism Association events, and he's visited with Visit Indy several times just to kind of benchmark what we have here compared to Indianapolis, and hopefully do a lot of the same things that they are doing there. The budget was approved for 2025 by the Lake County Commissioners. It's 15,000 more than last year, so they are spending less with almost a flat budget for 2025. It's fifteen thousand more than last year, so they are spending less with almost a flat budget for twenty-twenty-five. I don't have anything else, Rick, if anybody has any questions.
Any questions for Deanne? Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Yeah, one more thing, real quick. The South Shore CVA would like you all to know that they're happy to assist in any way. They are the voice of tourism here in Northwest Indiana. So, if you do have anything that you would like to connect with them on, they would like you to call them and use them as a resource if you need, um, if you're having family in from out of town, if you'd like to host your own convention, bring a family reunion, anything like that. I know we have the beautiful Dean and Barbara White Center right here in your own community that you can use, but they're, um, accessible to help you, uh, with your accommodations. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, Fire Territory Authority, Ms. Hardaway and Ms. Neal.
No report.
Moving on to department reports, Lisa Roberts, Parks Department.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, we had the, uh, MMA fight last Saturday. It brought in about seven hundred and fifty people. It was down from previous years. Um, we also have a, uh, program that we're going to try to get started on a regular basis. It's called Cookies and Canvas. Um, we have two age groups, and it will take place on December seventh. Age five through eight will be painting a snowman painting, and ages nine through thirteen will be doing a gingerbread, um, painting. And, um, you can register through the Dean and Barbara White Community Center. Um, it is Maryville residents, we're asking for fifteen dollars to help with supplies. Um, and then non-residents would be twenty dollars. And that's all I have.
Great, thank you. Police Department, Chief Nusis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, for the, I don't have all my numbers yet, as my secretary's been cycling on and off with her vacations. So, what I do have is that we had, uh, we responded two thousand, seven hundred and three calls for service for the month of October. We made one thousand, one hundred and eighteen traffic stops. And, um, just wanted to say that Halloween went good. We didn't have any issues. And the elections went well, uh, went well without any problems as well, so that's all I have for today.
Thank you, Chief. Anything for the police department? Ms. Sheila Schein, planning and building?
Yes, Mr. President, I would like to bring highlights from our October building, um, permit, uh, report. During the month of October, we issued a hundred and sixty-five permits. The total cost of permit fees that was collected was three hundred and fifty-seven thousand, eight hundred and thirty-four dollars and eighty-one cent. And for the year-to-date, we've, um, issued one thousand, three hundred and twenty-three permits, and total fees collected has been one million, four hundred and thirty-one dollars, three hundred and seventy-three dollars and twelve cents. And that concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Schein. Mr. King, Street Department.
So, other than what we highlighted on earlier with the, with the LEAFAC and, uh, other items, um, the community crossings grant that we were awarded, the, uh, one point five million, um, the streets that are gonna be done are, uh, Sixty-third Avenue, uh, from Taft Street, um, west to the end, a Hundred First Avenue, um, basically from Mississippi to Colorado Street, Harms Road from Eighty-Eighths Drive to Colorado, uh, West Seventieth Place, um, from Madison Street to Harrison, uh, Buchanan Street, um, from Seventy-third Avenue to Pierce, and Pierce from West Seventy-second to West, West Seventy-second Avenue to West Seventy-second Lane. Um, so that's our community crossings projects. Uh, the Maryville paving project, the concrete work, um, has been completed on, uh, Eighty-Fourth Avenue between Broadway and Maryville Road, also on Grant Street, uh, between U.S. Thirty and Eighty-Sixth Avenue. Um, the roadway milling has started. Uh, they're, uh, milling up on the north end of town right now, Jackson Street, uh, Fifty-seventh to Fifty-eighth, Van Buren, Fifty-seventh to Fifty-eighth. Um, another section of Van Buren from the, uh, there's a charter school up there to Fifty-ninth Avenue. Uh, we also did West Fifty-eighth Avenue from Jackson to Van Buren, and Mississippi Street from Fifty-third to Fifty-seventh, and the paving will start on Thursday. That's all I got.
How late can they continue paving, do you think?
It's all weather-dependent. Um, you know, we watch the temperatures. We follow the INDOT specifications, um, when we do it. I mean, I've seen, you know, I've seen where we paved, have warm years, we paved almost up till Christmas. So, just, uh, you know, the plant, the asphalt plants depend on weather, but it's all, it's all based on the temperature.
Are they done milling, Steve?
No, no.
Okay.
No, we're not done.
And the, uh, snowplows are ready to go?
Snowplow, they're, they're working on those now. Yeah, we're watching the weather. The, the salt boxes have started going back on.
Okay.
Uh, the plows are in the shop, ready to go. Uh, but yeah, we'll be, we got plenty, plenty of salt.
Great, thank you. Town manager's report, Mr. Griffin.
Mr. President, Madam Vice President, members of the council, Mr. January. You have before you my monthly report. Um, I encourage you to read it. It's better reading than me talking about it. I do want to call your attention to one highlight. I did successfully get awarded for the town of Maryville through the Formula Grant, so the amount of money was pretty much guaranteed. I just had to make sure I got on in time and clicked the right, uh, places to click. For seventy-six thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars, a federal energy efficiency conservation grant. Uh, I will be in a webinar tomorrow to understand the, the balance of it. The goal was to try to get LED lights for us, and if there was still money left, to put some in the street department offices. Um, I will keep the council informed of it. I'm glad that we got a exogenous revenue source. Unless there's a question of me directly, Mr. President, I'll be pleased to be seated.
Any questions for Mr. Griffin?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Mr. January, Click Treasurers Office, sure.
All right, so for the, uh, month of October, at the end of the, uh, month, we had thirty-eight million, two hundred and forty thousand, six hundred dollars and, uh, sixty-eight cents. Uh, we also had the pleasure of receiving another, uh, food and beverage check, uh, food and beverage tax, uh, check, a hundred and ninety-three thousand, two hundred and eighteen dollars and forty cents. And as, uh, my assistant back there will note, our numbers are just really fluctuating. We had about a hundred people, uh, businesses that participated in providing the, uh, food and beverage tax. And I want to say that's down from the previous month. There are people that paid previous months, but they didn't pay all of the months. So, we've still got a lot of work to do with that. Uh, but, uh, in regards to the, uh, food and beverage tax so far this year, we've collected, uh, eight hundred and forty-seven thousand, three hundred and eighty-two dollars and seventy-three cents. Uh, so, we're on course to have probably about a million dollars in that fund, uh, uh, before the next year. That includes my, or actually, another thing, uh, that I wanted to, uh, mention. I know we are, got a lot going on. People are still upset about the taxes. Uh, there was a Wall Street Journal article, and I loved, uh, how they, uh, read it. It said, "Americans staged a property tax revolt on Election Day." A number of, uh, states around the country had election, had, uh, ballots, uh, or measures on their ballots that got defeated. And that's because we have got to really, uh, as we're, um, doing, watch every single penny that we spend because taxpayers are very sensitive about their money.
Very good. Moving on tonight to, uh, general orders. We have ordinance twenty-four dash forty-three. Mr. Griffin.
Mr. President, Madam Vice President, members of the council, Mr. Mr. January. This is a proposed additional appropriation. As you know, the council has participated in the autho, the authorizations that led to the permission of the fire protection territory to issue bonds for several equipment matters. This additional appropriation ordinance, just, uh, we're asking that it just be considered for first reading. Under the Indiana law regarding additional appropriations, we have to have a public hearing. Should it make first reading tonight, we'll have that public hearing. It's your second meeting in the month. The amount that it involves is five million, two hundred and eighty-four thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars. That should be equal to the proceeds from the bond, uh, as it's intended to be sold. And again, this would be dedicated for products, projects like, uh, new gear, uh, turnout gear. The gear that keeps firefighters safe as they go in to fight fires, as safe as you can be when you do a thing like that, as well as some retrofit and re, uh, hand enhancements for Fifty-third Street? Fifty-seventh, I beg your pardon. Fifty-seventh Street, uh, Fire Station, uh, and a variety of other items. So, the council has embraced the sale already through the authorities. We do need permission to spend under Indiana law, and I'm asking the council's favor to approve it this evening for first reading, and you'll have a chance to consider it at your hearing at your next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. What's the wishes of the council?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit. Chair recognizes Mrs. Uselak for second on ordinance twenty-four dash forty-three on first reading. Questions or comments from the council? Hearing none. Mr. January, roll call, please.
Vice President Neal.
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Uselak.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hardaway.
Yes.
President Bella.
Aye.
All seven in favor.
Seven, zero, motion carries.
I thank the council.
We got tonight to resolutions. We have resolution twenty-four dash thirty-one. Uh, we did talk about some issues with the resolution, and I'll ask at this time for a motion to table.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Uselak and a second by Counselor She to table resolution twenty-four dash thirty-one. Would that be an appropriate, uh, action, Mr. Griffin, on this?
Mr. President, I think that's fully appropriate. I don't look for us to have an actual motion to take it from the table because it's gonna come back as an ordinance, but I do think that's appropriate. Thank you.
Would it be pro, more proper to defer?
No, I, I beg the council's pardon. No, because it's gonna come back as an ordinance.
That's fine.
Ordinarily, that would be my advice, but we're gonna have a whole new instrument.
Any other discussion on the, um, tabling? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Moving on to resolution twenty-four dash thirty-two. It's a resolution transferring a small amount of monies into the, out of the tourism fund and into a contractual tourism fund. The amount's fourteen hundred and forty-two dollars, and that effect is zero.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, second by Ms. Neal.
Yes.
For approval of resolution twenty-four dash thirty-two. Open for discussion. Hearing none. It's a resolution. A roll call vote sufficient. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That motion carries. Moving on to resolution twenty-four dash thirty-three. Again, it's a transfer of funds. Uh, the amount is forty-five thousand dollars, and that effect is zero.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, second by Mrs. Uselak, for approval of resolution twenty-four dash thirty-three, transfer of funds. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? That motion carries. Moving on tonight to resolution twenty-four dash thirty-four. It's a resolution authorizing and approving, accepting and concurring in a license agreement between the town of Maryville, Ross Township Trustee, and Trust for the use of the Maryville Fire Protection Territory and SAB Twenty-Two-TC Assets LLC, a Delaware limited liability company as grantee.
So moved.
Motion by Counselor She, second by?
Second.
Mrs. Uselak, thank you. Questions or comments on this motion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Same sign. That motion carries. Moving on tonight to, uh, BZA and large gathering actions. Ms. Schein.
Yes, our first, um, petitioner is, uh, seeking a large gathering permit application. Chris, Chris, are you in the audience? Okay, could you come to the podium? This is for, um, approval for the, uh, large gathering permit for the Christmas light display, uh, seventy-five ninety-five East Lincoln Highway, uh, November twenty-ninth through January, November twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-four through January one, twenty-twenty-five, and it's going to be from, on Sunday through Saturday, five P.M. to nine P.M. The applicant, Chris, will host a Christmas light display located at seventy-five ninety-five U.S. Highway at the, uh, five to, five P.M. to nine P.M. at the, uh, November twenty-ninth through January first. Anticipated visitors will be a maximum of two thousand cars per day, and since the maximum of two thousand cars per day, two thousand tickets will be sold. Security plans have been confirmed by the Maryville Police Department as well as fire safety plans by the Maryville Fire Department. There will be one male toilet facility, one female toilet facility to use. There will be one dumpster and four trash containers outside, and will be maintained by Republic Service. There will not be a telephone service available to the public. No on-street parking will be available, and no overnight stays will be a part of the assembly. Vehicles will enter through the northwest entrance. They will follow a gravel Christmas lighted trail and traffic attendants into the waiting lines at the east of the property. Everyone will remain in their vehicles throughout the experience. The waiting lines will allow employees to collect interest fees from each customer. Each lane will then be released, one after the, the other, through the trail in the orderly fashion. As the vehicles drive through the trail, they are entertained with Christmas lights and scenes which are set throughout the property. Christmas music will be heard only inside the cars by radio station. Once they have approached the exit, they will be directed to depart the event through the south side of the bordering church and out to Eighty-Third Avenue. The design of the trail enables an efficient, safe flow of vehicles. The extended entrance trail with the addition for vehicles waiting lines help facilitate large numbers of vehicles while customers will enter through the northwest end of the property. There is another entrance exit on the north end of the property. This will be used as an employ, employee entrance and an emergency exit entrance. Upon exiting, customers will depart to the east on Eighty-Third Avenue.
Gentlemen, welcome back.
How you doing?
So, this will be your, is it third year now?
Fourth.
Fourth year, okay.
Time goes quick.
I know we've made adjustments along the way with traffic patterns and lights and exits, et cetera, et cetera. This is in, uh, Mr. Pettit's district. I'd like to defer to Sean for his initial comments.
Well, obviously, Chris has been extremely successful, so I'm gonna make a motion, Mr. President, to approve this, but I have a, a comment to Costa and to Steve about this.
Let's get a second. We'll open it for discussion.
Second.
Mrs. Uselak for the second. Go ahead, Mr. Pettit.
Uh, earlier, guys, I received an email that I sent you, um, and Chris, there's a concern out in that area about Eighty-Third and Randolph. That intersection's bad. I mean, people just fly down Randolph. And I guess to Costa and Steve, should we direct them to go west on Eighty-Third, back toward Grand Boulevard, Costa, instead of going to that intersection that's dark and avoid any kind of conflict? I'm sure Chris wouldn't mind if you guys direct your people to go to the west instead of the east, right?
We've actually had a s, we have a big sign at the end of where they get to Eighty-Third that actually tells them to go west.
Go, go west on Eighty-Third, back to Grand Boulevard.
Which is easier for the flow rather than waiting to turn left.
All right, all right, because the, the resident had asked about a three-way stop sign that Steve and I and Costa are kinda kicking around still and figuring out you've got that hill on Randolph that's problematic, so... Okay, that's all, Mr. President.
We also talked about, Steve was gonna go out and take a look at the visibility there at that intersection. If we can cut back some foliage and make some improvements there for line of sight?
Yeah, we've cut some back there already, and there, there is a light there. There, there's a, there's a...
There's a street light, yeah.
There's a tree light there.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other discussion for these petitioners? I see you're already starting to assemble a lot of the, uh, displays.
We added some nice ones as well, so, some other, other things that I think the town would like if people stop in would be great.
Great, thank you. Anything else from the council? Hearing nothing else, all in, roll call, though, please.
Vice President Neal.
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Uselak.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hardaway.
Yes.
President Bella.
Aye.
Seven in favor.
Congratulations, gentlemen.
Thank you. Thanks, guys.
Ms. Schein.
Our next petitioner is Erica Woods. Erica Woods, uh, special exception approval for a daycare center at sixty-fourty-nine Broadway. Petitioner is seeking special exception approval from Section twenty-one dash one thirty-six to allow a childcare center at sixty-fourty-nine Broadway. This location was previously a daycare. Petitioner holds a bachelor's in education, a master's in early childhood development, and in the past has worked as an elementary school teacher. She states that she has been deeply motivated to provide exceptional care and education to children and their families. Subsequent, subsequently, Erica Woods comes before this body with over twenty-four years of experience as a director of a... of a well-established childcare center located in Illinois. Petitioner submits that providing educational excellence has been her life's work. She is now excited to appear and request special exception approval to open a new center in Maryville with services for children two through twelve years old, Monday through Friday, from six-thirty A.M. until six P.M. This facility will service seventy-four children at full capacity. Employ ten teachers, teachers assistant. Crayon University will use the creative curriculum, a proven educational framework that has been adopted by many preschool and head start programs across the country. This curriculum supports the children's development in all areas, cognitive, social, emotional, and physical through engaging hands-on activity. Petitioner submits that proposed special exception use will not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, and morals of the general welfare and is in accordance with the comprehensive plan because Crayon University will provide a quality, early childhood education and safe environment while adhering to the rules and regulations of the state of Indiana and the town of Maryville. The proposed special exception will not be injurious and to the use and enjoyment of the others in the properties, immediate vicinity, and the purpose already permitted, nor substantially diminish and impair property values. Crayon University blends seamlessly with existing community. To minimize traffic congestion, this center is conveniently located in the back of the shopping center, which subsequently allows for ample parking because the center is out of everyone's way. The establishment of the proposed special exception will not impede the normal or orderly development. Crayon University will not disrupt the normal flow of business for its neighbors. Fortunately, adequate utilities, access roads, drainage, and all other necessary facilities already exist. Adequate ingress and egress exists. Granting approval for this proposed special exception is necessary because it is, in the past, approval ended when the business ended. For this petitioner only, at this use only, and for, for this petitioner only, at this location only, and for this use only.
Thank you, Ms. Shine.
Ms. Woods.
Yeah. So, you heard a lot. My name is Erica, and my last name is Woods, and the property is at sixty-fourty-nine Broadway. I am a former teacher, but I am also currently a director of early childhood. I have been in that position for twenty-four years, and now I am seeking approval to open a childcare center.
And this is in the strip mall there where Strack and Vow Tail is and such?
Yes.
This is already a daycare?
Yes. Yes, it was. Okay.
Anything else, Keesha, for me?
So, Mr. President, I would like to add that the process for getting a childcare license in the state of Indiana has switched from us. We have to give the license first, then the state will come in with the fire inspector and the state and fire inspector and actually approve the facility to be open.
Very good. I believe, I believe we need a motion on the floor.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Hardaway for a motion for approval, second for Ms. Seona.
Yes.
Questions or comments? Hearing none.
I have a question. Ms. Woods, you said it's two, what is it, up to age twelve?
Yes.
So do you have after-school pickup, or you go to different schools and pick up those twelve-year-olds, those after-schoolers?
No, I wouldn't do transportation, they would have to be dropped off to us. I've done that for many years, and there seems to be a lot of liability with it, and it can get very confusing. And if it's not coordinated well, their children are waiting, and I just don't want to take on that responsibility.
Okay.
Anything else from the council? Hearing no other comments, Mr. January, roll call please.
Vice President Neal.
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Yuzlak.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hardaway.
Yes.
President Bella.
Aye.
Seven in favor.
Seven in favor, congratulations.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Our next petitioner is Mr. Michael Watson. These gentlemen are requesting special exception approval for a dining and restaurant located at fifty-five twenty-four Broadway. Petitioners requesting special exception approval from section twenty-one dash one thirty-six in a C-two community commercial zoning district to allow a dine-in restaurant at fifty-five twenty-four Broadway. Petitioner is presently open as a carryout restaurant only. Petitioner has been in the restaurant business for the past seven years. In addition to serving great food, petitioner wants to hire locally and use monies generated to give back to teachers, first responders, et cetera. Petitioner's restaurant will have thirteen employees and be open on Sundays from one P.M. to six P.M. And from eleven A.M. to nine P.M., Monday through Saturday. The restaurant will feature a variety of jerk food items to include chicken, salmon, shrimp, and lamb, et cetera, plus size. Petitioner submits that the established maintenance and operation of the proposed special exception will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, and morals of the general welfare in accordance with the comprehensive plan because petitioner states that he will keep up with the current food trends, food label inspections, et cetera. The proposed special exception will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of the other properties in the immediate vicinity for the purpose already permitted, nor substantially diminish or impair property values within the neighborhood because employees and customers will both observe a code of conduct. Additionally, the establishment of the proposed special exception will not impede the normal and orderly development improvement of the surrounding properties for the use currently permitted in the district because this is, this restaurant will only operate during the normal business hours, and additionally, petitioner will keep the parking lot and landscaping free from debris and unsightly trash. Adequate utilities, access road, drainage, and other necessary facilities are already in place. Adequate measures to provide ingress and egress already exist. For this petitioner only, at this location only, and for this use only. Ms. Woods.
Gentlemen, how are you?
How you guys doing?
So that's the old Pepe's Building.
Yes.
From decades ago.
Yep.
So I'm glad it's being used, actually. Councilor Hayes Edwards, anything to add, this is your district.
Uh, no.
I will entertain a motion for approval.
Motion to approve.
Councilor Shee for motion.
Yes.
Mrs. Neal for a second. Questions or comments for the petitioners? Anything else to add, Sheila?
No.
Very good. Mr. January, roll call please.
Vice President Neal.
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Yuzlak.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hardaway.
Yes.
President Bella.
Aye.
Seven in favor.
Seven in favor, congratulations, gentlemen, and good luck to you.
Thank you so much, Maryville. Appreciate you guys.
You bet. Ms. Shine.
Yes, and our last petitioner is Mr. Eric January from Conduit Investment Advisors.
Go ahead, Ms. Shine.
Mr. January is seeking special exception approval on two-point-two-five acres in a C-three highway commercial zoning district. Petitioner is seeking special exception approval from section twenty-one dash one thirty-six to allow a business office event and hall rentals at seventy-four thirty Broadway in a C-three highway commercial zoning district. Conduit Investment Advisors located at seventy-four thirty Broadway would like to have office events and educational seminars that will promote financial literacy. Financial literacy events are designed to measure the participants' ability to apply reliable information and systematic decisions to personal financial information decisions. Petitioner will partner with other similar businesses to provide office space for training purposes on, in a contemporary setting. This property offers adequate parking that will not increase, increase or the surrounding business in cringe. Petitioners would like to also provide hall rental. Additional to the establishment of the proposed special exception will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of the surrounding properties for the uses already permitted in the district. There are over seventy parking spaces available. Petition, petitioner submits that the proposed special exception use will not be detrimental to or endanger the public safety morals and general welfare as it is in accordance with the comprehensive plan. The proposed special exception will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of the other properties in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted and nor substantially diminish or impair the property values within the neighborhood. Adequate utilities, access road, drainage, and other necessary facilities are already in place. Adequate ingress and egress. The Conduit investment team occupies the building during business hours, nine A.M. to five P.M. And this is for this petitioner only, at this location only, and for this use only.
Mr. January, tell us about your business there.
All right, so, in addition to being a, an investment advisor, the thing that I've, I've done that for over thirty years. In addition to that, I'm a CPA. I've written three books on money and economics. The books have been so accurate, I've been called Einstein of Finance. And they're titled Gainology, I predicted the housing crisis, I predicted the banking crisis. My books explain why globalization wasn't going to work. I've got a wealth of knowledge in the books. I have been on the speaking circuit, I've been on WBEZ, I've been on all sorts of radio and TV stations. Paid, some of the stuff has been paid, and people recognize me and appreciate me for my honesty and my accuracy in what I say. I don't play when it comes to money. And I decided to, when I moved to Indiana, which I tell most people, I thought I lived in Africa before I moved to Indiana. I was that much of a Chicagoan. And when I moved here, the closest thing that was, to my heart, was Texas, where I played college football at and where I was born at. But when I moved here and saw the people and met many of my neighbors and enjoyed the environment, I mean, I've got a bunch of friends that are here today. I thank God for the people that I've met. When I, when this property came available, I heard a lot of people talking about it. I said, so let me go check it out. And when I saw it, I fell in love with it, because I'm a country guy at heart. I saw the two-point-three acres, I saw the river in the back, I saw the structure that was damaged in the back. I overlooked the complete ugliness of the building, it's still got work to be done. And I invested in it. You see the interior, you know that I invested in it. Maybe not, I haven't addressed the parts that Ms. Neal wants me to address, which is the grass. I will address the grass. Because if you come to my personal property, my grass is tall because I keep bees, and I like them to pollinate the grass. But I'm going to address that, make it the, what I believe was really the first community center in Maryville. Because as I've been working on this project, I've met people that have had various functions there, and has been an integral part of the community. But it was abandoned, dilapidated, the windows were broken, it was filled with asbestos, and I had to cover a lot of that stuff up. And the building is beautiful, if you see it now. People have been asking me, because the signs are on, on the marquee, can I rent this place? My primary thing that I'm going to do at this place is financial education, is events. So versus me having to go out and rent some, something from someplace that we don't have, I'll be able to use it at my own facility. And when the, when I, when my crowd is too large, I'm going to Mr. Anthony's place to keep the business local. And I'm going to employ local people. So everything about my business is about transparency, and I'm asking for approval for, for this particular facility. I already have the business license, and I intend to continue to conduct my business with my team, which is basically remote. So oftentimes, when you pass by, I meet my team a couple times a week, and other than that, we visit remotely. The reason for me buying this building is for the events that I'm going to host and allowing other people to be able to go to a facility that's nice. People were using this facility previously, firefighters, police officers, and all of you have seen it, and to me, it was disgusting. You walk in there now, you'll sit on the toilet and wouldn't have a problem. You wouldn't even feel like you have to wash the seat, like you wouldn't have to wipe it down, it's that nice. That's what I've done to make the facility nice. That's the type of pride that I want to see in all of Maryville, not just on seventy-four thirty Broadway. I want to see it up and down Broadway, Seventy-first Street, and I believe that this could be a catalyst to something that can be great. But I need you all's support, because I've invested a lot of money in this place. It's time for me to get a return on investment.
Shine, has everything been completed for the building? Are we good to go here with safety and all that? I know it's been some discussion.
So, Mr. President, we've been, the fire inspector and I have been talking with Mr. January about the things that's needed for him to go forward with the safety portion of it. Mr. Bob is in, is in the building, he can further explain, Bob, could you come, please? What is needed for him to have the hood and all of that maintained? Mr. January, we sat down with Mr. January, and he pulled the permit for the interior remodel portion of it, and that portion has been inspected by our building inspector, Dan Brown. But there are a few fire safety things that need to be done in order for him to proceed the hood system. Let me see, I got my notes here. The, Bob, you, you're better than me, thank you.
So there, there are a couple of different things here, and I spoke to Mr. January. In order to operate the kitchen, you need the hooded, cleaned, and the suppression system inspected, which is already on schedule, we've already talked to the contractors about that. The biggest thing is, is if it's approved before he can occupy it, because the building was built prior to the town becoming a town, it, downstate has no occupancy classification. So it basically just is a building, it doesn't exist for a commercial building in the state. So also with that, just like any assembly occupancy, you need an occupant load. So that way, you need to know how many people you can safely fit in that room. So again, before he'd be able to occupy it and use it as an event space, it would have to be downstate, actually classified, and have an occupant load in order for him to occupy it.
So Bob, do other towns in Lake County, do they do their own occupancy ratings?
No, I know, and Chief Yurka has looked into this too. Typically, we don't, just because, again, it kind of falls under, the way the fire code reads is that it has to be provided to us, not that we have to do it. What happens is when it, the architects or engineers give me the number, I review it, look it over, and assure that it's correct. If there's any problems, then, you know, I go back to them whenever anything's built or any other assembly occupancy. But, you know, other places in town, we've had to do the same exact thing. There was even another place that waited a year and a half for their occupant load and their business license because they didn't have it. And so we, they were waiting on it the entire time.
What about neighboring towns like Shererville and Dyer?
No, and Chief Yurka kind of speak probably better to that, that there's stuff that you can go on for the state website and do. And, but, that would be basically what, double-dipping public services, Chief, if you...
Hey, guys, you're out of order. Guys. You're out of order, sir.
Hang on, hang on.
Go, go ahead.
So, I did...
So I did speak with Mr. January this morning. I was able to check with Shererville because that was the example that was given. The Shererville Fire Inspector, if the occupancy, let's say if it was, if it was a fish market and the new owner was a fish market, if as long as it was established and zoned as a fish market, that the local inspector would confirm that it's still the same, meaning that the building wasn't laid out different, all that good stuff. In this case, since it's not zoned, it's kind of like a catch twenty-two. And there is a thing with the state, even though the state, if you call them, they're going to tell you, like Mr. January knows, that they only really do this for daycares. There is a link that you can go to, I don't know if he was able to go to it today, because I just found out about this today. So this is about all I know about it. You can request the state to do it if the local jurisdiction doesn't offer the occupancy setting, like we do not. I didn't get a chance to get ahold of Dyer, but Shererville will be the only example because that's the one that was given to me. So it's like fifty-fifty. Some of it was, it's, we don't do it, they don't do it, they do it to an extent, but all the requirements had to be met prior to that happening with the zoning.
So Chief Yerga question, if the state does not do it and the town does not do it, who would he go to to get it done?
Uh, Bob, that would be, like, normally it's an architect or a contractor or...
So the architect or a contractor could give him the occupancy.
I meant to say engineer, architect, engineer.
And then it would come back to you all.
Right, and then I review it. But even for the state, I'm not sure what the paperwork is. I just know they have to have it classified downstate as an assembly occupancy for that reason.
Thank you.
So I wanted to add, because I talked to Shererville and Dyer, and they clearly do it for their residents. And I got some quotes from architects. This building has been here for seventy-two years. It has been used exactly what has been used for. Walls that I wanted to take out, I couldn't take out because the building is made like a bunker. It's meant to survive World War Three. So I couldn't do anything. It's the exact same dimensions as it was previously. It had occupancy limits of a hundred and seventy-five and a hundred and seventy-five in the bar. My family member took those things down and threw them out. So if I had those things, we wouldn't be talking about it because it has had the occupancy. We can talk to people that have worked in the town of Merrillville that I'm sure they've signed an affidavit stating that they had the occupancy limits there. So I don't believe that this is an issue, particularly after I spoke to Mr. Yerga today. This is another example of how maybe we've done things in the past where the fire department hasn't done this, but it is within the power of the town to do this because Shererville and Dyer are doing it. And it's right here on this nomenclature right here that you can get right off their website. This is not something that I just pulled up and conjured out of the, out of the sky. This is something that is overdue. We've got people paying, in my particular instance, when I called the first architect, after speaking with Bob, I got a price of forty, forty-five hundred dollars for a drawing that I don't need. So the, the fire marshal, if we added this to their thing, this could be another fee that they can be collecting, particularly when you consider the fact that we are going through this whole budget issue where we don't have enough money to fund the police department. Every business in this town at some point has got to have some sort of occupancy limit and we've got people that are constantly moving in and out. So I don't know why this is an issue, particularly after I've invested the amount of money that I have. And it's something that's going to benefit the town, is not endangering anybody. It had the occupancy loads up there previously. There is, in my mind, I'm not voting on this. It's up to you all to vote, unless there's a tie, then I'll come up there and easily do the tie-breaking vote. But I know based off of my conversations and even Chief Yerga, when I brought it to his attention today, he mentioned honestly, I hadn't thought about that as a new revenue source because other towns are doing it. I didn't call and ask the cities because cities have different authorities than towns. But other towns are doing it.
Mr. Pillman, did you have some to add?
Yeah, so to speak to that, I'll tell you personally, I think we should stay away from me going out and doing that for a couple of reasons. One being it's only me and I don't have the time to do that. It's taking taxpayer money and using me on personal businesses, which I think is not ethical. But also if for some reason I get that number wrong, for whatever reason, and say something happens to that building, they always come back to that number. If you look at history of fire station nightclub and Rhode Island fire that you can see on, they overoccupied the building. I don't think the town should get involved in that. We've not done it yet. Other places have hired an architect and got it done themselves. Personally, I don't think it's a good idea, but that's, that's my personal opinion. And again, I don't have the resources to go out and do it myself. It's going to take some time and energy. And I don't think we should open ourselves up to that litigation possibly, especially since we've had other people do it already.
Do we have the records that show that they had an occupancy limit? I mean, you're the fire department. You all keep records of it because it had the signs on it, just like you all made that sign right there that said ninety-eight. That sign was never there before. So you all have the capability of doing it.
This is a public building.
I know, I understand this is a public building. But my point is, when you walk in there, if I got a sign like that and wrote a hundred and seventy-five on it, how would you know that was correct?
We'd have to double check it.
Right. So when you went in the American Legion before, how did you double check? I guarantee you, somebody in here, somebody, particularly a police, at some point, you all had to do some inspection and you noticed that. So it's not like I'm just saying this out of the blue. It had the occupancy thing. But, and I'm going too far because for what I'm doing, I don't really need the hood system in order to do it. But I'm not planning to use the hood system, but it is being cleaned right now so that when I do events, people will be able to bring food in themselves. There are caterers that do that. So for what my intentions are right now, that's not necessary. I can cross that road, I can cross that bridge down the road. Right now, I need to be able to start getting a return on investment. And we should have a record of it. I shouldn't be punished because we don't have a record.
Thank you, Mr. January. Is there a motion from the council?
Motion to approve.
Counselor Shee?
Second.
I have a question. Mr. January, how much money did you invest into it so far?
Let's say it's well over three hundred thousand dollars.
Over three hundred thousand?
Well over three hundred thousand dollars.
Going right into the building?
Going right into the building.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question also.
Go ahead.
So how is the occupancy going to be resolved? You have to have it, how is it going to be resolved?
Well, from what I understand, when I'm occupying it, using my business, I can use it as a business, just when I'm renting it out to other people, the hall rental aspect.
So how is that going to be resolved?
That would have to be up to him. He just can't occupy it until we know the load and the state has an occupancy classification.
Can we make it part of the condition of approval, Mr. Stuttenoff? Is that possible?
You can make it a part of the condition of approval, but the application is for a business, a business event center and a rental hall, correct?
Yes, no, the, the...
Three combined uses.
Well, no, he, C, in a C three, a business office like his investment office where he, when he got his license, he has a license.
Correct.
For that, conduit investment services for four people, he, he has that.
Correct.
Right.
The other two uses I'm talking about...
The other two uses that he was asking for is to be able to have seminars. In other words...
An event center.
Well, in our, an event center, but in our ordinance, twenty-one dash one thirty-six, any kind of training services or any, anything like that goes for special exception approval. And that's what he wants to bring in as a part of his...
And then also a rental hall.
And then the rental hall, yes.
Correct.
Which it was already currently a hall rental place.
Seventy-two years.
But he has to get the special approval from the town council before restarting that use.
And also the state, because it was built prior to the town becoming a town, the state doesn't have it classified as that. So that's why the state has to have that, because if there are special events that require a special event permit through the state, that all has to be in line first.
So how was it able to function as a hall rental for all these years if the state did not recognize it?
The state did not... The state just didn't identify it. It's one of those things that just was never identified.
So why are we identifying it now then?
Now the problem is retaliation, retaliation.
I'm just asking.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your question.
I said, so why, why are we making it an issue to identify it now, now, if the state has never identified it?
Because it was brought to my attention, that's why. So I have to make sure it's up to code now.
But you also said you don't care to do it as well, right?
No, no, it's not that I don't care to do it.
You said you don't have the time or energy, correct?
To calculate his occupant load for a private business? No, because I haven't done it previously. I've always had other entities do that by themselves, which in the code, the fire code, which I referenced and gave to him, and I did it things on all of you guys, it says it needs to be provided to me, not me provide it to them. And that's why, it's not that it's an issue or anything, it's just one of those things of, it was identified as, okay, it was next, because I called the state fire marshal and talked with him about it. He said it would have to be classified in the occupancy first. And then just like any occupant, assembly occupancy, you need an occupant load to know who, how many people you can safely fit in there.
So, Mr. Pillman, Mr. January said he can't get ahold of somebody at the state who said they would come up and do that. Can we assist in that by making a phone call?
Absolutely, I'll contact the state fire marshal, local guy tomorrow.
I don't know who Eric's talking to, but that's what he shared with us today.
What Mr. Pillman said was he'd have to hire a private architect.
Well, you could, but the state could also do it though.
Yeah, I didn't know about that until Chief Yerga, you know, brought that up today. I just know, you know, again, reaching out to him, I talk to him all the time, and he said, you know, he looked it up, I said, was it classified? He said, it's not even classified because it was prior to the town becoming a town.
Okay.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Ms. Highway.
What was this building prior to?
It was a legion, but again, I had never been in there to identify the occupant load or anything in there. Part of the reason why the occupant load is a big deal, because it also depends on what layout you have. For example, if you have fixed seating, that number shrinks. If you have removal seating or tables, all that number, there's a lot of factors that go into that. So that's again, why an architect is the best one to do that, because when we get new plans, that's already laid on the plans. The floor plan is all there, everything's laid out there, and they tell them the numbers. For example, with the community center, you know, it's different occupant loads for the different events that are going on, depending on what they have. So again, looking at, you know, any assembly area, I don't know what the layout's going to be because it's not on paper and it doesn't say that. To me, having documentation of that and having a third party verify that is the best thing to have happen.
So was the American Legion private or not-for-profit?
Again, I have no idea. Prior to me starting there, I had no idea. I hadn't been in here, so.
It was fraternal too. They treated fraternal organizations differently.
Is there any history?
Of course.
Somewhere that is documented, that's been recorded?
It's gotta be.
On a building that has been there seventy-two years?
So...
Before the town, before the town became...
She would answer that, she would answer that. The use is the same.
The use is going to be different. He's going to be operating a private business, a private consulting firm with an event center, with a rental hall.
It's the same as a hall rental.
No, it's not quite the same.
The thing is, is that...
Because you're meeting in a room with the meeting.
Again, it may have been used as it was before, I don't know. Now, records, those are up to the owners to hold themselves, I understand. The records probably don't exist because it's been so long, which is why it's imperative to have somebody else verify what needs to be done there.
The building was last occupied in twenty twenty-one, am I correct?
I believe so, I'm not sure.
Twenty twenty-two, because we had invented in twenty-one.
It closed just after I started there, started here. So I don't know what the records are prior to me. All I know is I have to steal from where mine.
I'm just saying, it shouldn't be that far back where we couldn't get records.
So, Mr. January, you know, you're already three hundred thousand into, what's another four thousand to get the proper paperwork in order to do it?
So, that's, that's the whole, that's the whole point. Merrillville has got to be more competitive. We need to update our processes. We're losing ground to our surrounding neighbors because they have processes that are more time efficient and cost effective.
Okay, but I'm talking about your situation right now with your building today.
Correct.
Can you hire an architect to get the proper paperwork?
Forty-five hundred dollars, that's unreasonable.
Well, can you shop it around, maybe get it cheaper?
When they already have...
You know, I don't know.
Well, if the records were kept, this wouldn't be an issue. Because today, I imagine most of this stuff is digital. At some point, we didn't have a Chicago fire where the stuff got burnt down, it's somewhere in somebody's file cabinet, where the occupancy load is. And that's my, my point. And that's the only, in regards to me using the kitchen, for me to use the actual facility, that's a whole nother issue. If you want to pause the hall rental, I may be able to tolerate that, but I cannot pause having my events. I've got events that I've been putting on hold. In fact, the hall rental is an issue because I have to refund some people some money. It's costing me money every day that I cannot use this facility. And there's still more work to be done, but I put it on pause. I'm doing this hood clean thing because it's something that needs to be done. And I'm not trying to break a law, skirt a law. I want to make this town better.
Okay.
Okay.
I have another question. Because I'm going back to the bottom line. I don't know about what happened in the past, I'm dealing with today to move forward. Do he need the occupancy code?
Does he need the occupancy code in order to open up the event side?
In order to occupy it, yes.
Okay, so then how are we going to move forward with that? That's, I just asked that fifteen minutes... They said they were going to, Pillman said he would make a call downstate to the fire marshal.
Right, I'll contact the state fire marshal, see how we can help him that way.
So until that happens... He said he can put the hall rental on hold, but he wants to be able to open up his business. Can we do that?
Okay, can it be done according to what Joe said? Can he put the...
He has the business already.
The application, as far as I see it, is unified. So it is a business, private business, a business event center and a rental hall. It cannot be parsed out.
Yes, it can.
How come it can't? I'm only asking because it, like he said, if he can put it on hold or we can make special exceptions until he gets the occupancy done, are we able to do that?
The occupancy would be determinative on everything under the application.
This is, this is what the state person said.
So are we not able to make a motion on this?
We have a motion for a second on the floor.
A motion to approve, right.
So how is it going to be rectified? I'm still asking my same question.
We're going to pull up some records and we're going to find this occupancy.
Why can't we approve a contingent upon the occupancy getting completed?
The occupancy, President Bella?
No matter who does it, the state or architect or whoever.
But my point, President Bella, this has already been done. The signs were there. We can get affidavits from people that have worked in this facility. I'm not making this up.
I don't know if that's going to be a legal thing to use though, Eric, because something happens there in your overcapacity, it could be some big problems.
Can we give him a number not to go over until he gets the occupancy done?
Who did the determination eighty years ago?
What?
No, whatever, whenever the building was erected, who did the determination on the...
The building was built in phases. So this, that phase of it...
No, what we're, what we're talking about now is we're talking about calculated data that would determine the public health, safety and welfare of capacity in that building.
We could do that ourselves. It's two thousand square feet, let's do the math.
No, 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 no. What we're saying is, contact the fire marshal, have the fire marshal come up and determine it, or get, hire an architect to do the determination. That's all we're asking.
This is what the fire marshal said, and I'm telling you, this, this is from Travis Clary. Eric, hi Eric. I just strictly work with EMS and fire departments to ensure they have the proper medical equipment to, to make things simple. I do not do anything like this unfortunately. I would check with your local building codes department for guidance. Have a good one.
And that came from downstate.
He is the District One and Two EMS manager, Emergency Medical Services Division, Indiana Department of Homeland Security, who you contact through the fire marshal's page.
I'm saying, have the fire marshal do the determination or have the architect do a determination.
If the fire marshal wants to do it, I'm all good with it.
Well, no.
I'll pay a fee.
What I'm saying either, either or.
The state just said he's not going to come down and do it. They only do it for daycare centers.
So is the EMS director the state fire marshal? So is the EMS director the state fire marshal?
Yes.
Pillman, can you confirm or deny that?
That doesn't sound correct to me, no.
So, Ms. Shine, we check with the county.
Here's the thing with the, the whole issue with the occupant load from then till now. I don't, we don't know anything what the layout was, or anything, what it was built in phases. We don't know when that occupant load, what it was, what it posted, when it was posted, if it was accurate and kept up to date. I would have anybody in town, and I have it, anybody, any, uh, business in town, verify those numbers through an architect, through that third party. It's a safer, easier thing, that's what they do. I understand it's a cost, but it's a cost of doing business that I have not, it's not just one person, I've done it universally across the board to everybody. I have them verify those numbers to confirm, because again, if they had fixed seating, maybe the number goes up, maybe it goes down. You know, depending on what the numbers are, depends on what type of life safety issues you need in the building. You know, when you look at the history of fires, that occupant load is one of the first things they look at, and they start pointing fingers of who did it and, and whose fault it is. And I don't want to be on the end of that, and I know none of you do, and I know the fire chief will not be.
So, Ms. Shine, would the county have records on the American Legion building?
So, it's, it's very difficult to, we didn't start keeping records here till 1971.
Okay.
So if that building was built prior to 1971, we have no record of it.
Okay, so let me ask you.
So he's, Mr. Bella has just, hold on, he's just asked me to check with the county. We can check, but I doubt it, because, as you know, I just had to get rid of all of my records, because I had too many back there and find a place for them. But I can, Mr. Bella, check with the county to see if there's anything to help get the occupancy for that building. And I do want to say to Mr. January, as I talk to him, and to the residents here in the town of Ameriville, we make everybody do this. This is the, and we get, we get pushback, we get pushback, but we make everybody do this, because it is, um.
That's all right.
So.
Let's clarify, to get, Ms. Shine.
When I say, when I say we make everyone do this, we have people who buy buildings and come to us and ask us for building permits. We have to make sure that it has a Knox box, we have to make sure that it's safety, safe, we have to make sure that it's sprinkled, if it need to be sprinkled. And there are some older buildings that didn't have any of that, don't have any records of it. Uh, people buy buildings, one of the things that, that, that people aren't as savvy as they should be about real estate when they buy buildings, you, when you buy a building, you need to ask for all of this. You need to say, when, do, do you have this? Do you have a plat of survey? Do you have this? Do you have the building plans? We have people come to us to ask us, well, how are the pipes in the floor at the building? I know you have it, we don't have that.
Okay, guys.
So I'm not gonna go back and forth, I'm just wanting to explain.
I'm sorry, hold on, it's not public time.
Let's clarify something. So, Ms. Shine, when you said you got rid of files, you mean you relocated into a different?
I relocated mine.
Yeah, you didn't get rid of files, we just relocated into a safer building.
No, I relocated mine, so, but I'm going to.
Okay, go ahead, Bob.
So, I just want to say that Thursday was not the first time that Mr. January was told about this.
She got rid of him from this building.
I, I did inform this to Mr. January a month or so ago, when we had a meeting, a bunch of us, so Thursday was not the first time this has been stated.
Okay.
So it's not like it was just sprung on him or anybody else.
Okay.
It was stated previously to where this was known prior to, so it wasn't just all of a sudden, boom. This was a month or so ago, whenever Ms. Shine, me, Dan Brown, and Mr. Griffin all sat down in a meeting.
Okay.
So.
When, when you read that, when I read the final report and saw that you could jeopardize me actually being a licensed, I may have heard what you said sometimes, and just like a lot of people, you can hear some things, but not really hear it. But when I read it, because I'm a very good reader with very high comprehension, I'm like, hold up, this is wrong. There's no way that you all don't have this record. And I know this may have been your practice in, in the past, but Dyer and Shererville, which are kicking our butts economically, uh, are doing it.
No, they aren't.
And you all may not be comfortable, uh, doing it.
Okay.
But we need to really consider updating our policies, because this could be a new revenue source for the fire department.
If it's something that we do look into to update, what, how, are you, so we still need to deal with what you're doing with now? I'm not, I'm not disagreeing that that's something that we may not need to look into, but how are you planning on getting that so you can get your business open? Pillman said that he's gonna have the fire chief come down.
Are you gonna say something with your knowledge of Lake County?
Yes.
Go ahead, sure.
Yes. Okay, um, my name is Brenda Ford, and the American Legion has always been a part of the FOP. I'm part of that too. Um, our past councilman, Officer Metcalf, was the FOP president. We've, Metcalf, so he is very familiar of that building. We've had very many events located at that building. I've seen it from day one, I've been there many a times, and I've seen it as he's been renovating it. Nothing has been totally burned down or crushed down or anything, he has just revised the setting per se. So if you want the count, or the information of the count of the, I, uh, people that can be in that building, the officer would be, I'm sure, more than happy to give you that count. And he's had many events there as part, they've had meetings there from the FOP, and they have been there for quite a long time.
Thank you, Ms. Ford.
Okay.
Anything else to add? Any other questions from the council?
Yes, I have one.
Oh, Leona?
I just need some help in understanding how a building can be here for 72 years and been occupied by the town since 1971, and not have any records for that occupancy, for that building being erected. That just does not make sense to me, not at all. Because every building that's erected should have some records that it was erected, and the capacity that's supposed to be in there. Make it make sense to me.
Anyone want to answer that, Ms. Shine? I think you already kind of answered it. It was built before the town became a town.
I understand that.
That's why I don't, I don't have anything, because it was built before the town became a town.
But the main question is, who made the determination on occupancy when the building was built?
Thank you.
Well, since we don't know that, don't we just move forward and get it done? So now we'll have it, so that's.
So why wouldn't the town?
Let's just get it done, so if you, so you can get your.
So y'all want him to pay for it?
We can't, we, but we can't, we cannot legally just stick a number on there. We, they have to find out, so they need to go through the proper, Sheila, what do the other resident or people who, in this same situation?
I think we just made the Chateau do this recently with their addition.
We just, we just made, we, you know, I didn't want to call names, because I didn't want to do that, but we did just make, uh, Mr. Williams at Chateau do it, but, ask, I'm sorry, ask him to do it, ask, I'm sorry. But, because it, it was contingent upon him moving along with this building. So he had to get occupancy for each one of those rooms there, because, uh, for some reason, we didn't have it. So his architect.
Well, the Knights of Columbus was built before the.
And the Knights of Columbus was built before the town. So his architect supplied it for us. Case in point, Fiesta Palace, everybody's familiar with that, down the street, sold to another, uh, entity. They didn't have it. But that gentleman, the pastor of that church that he has there, he got it, his architect provided it. That's, that's how we got it in the past. I don't know if the fire, I will check into it, if the fire, and work with Mr. Pillman, and see if someone would come up and do, and do those for us. I don't know, I would have to see, but we have asked people to do them, and they, they've done them.
Okay, real quick, the, the link, I did provide Mr. January with a link from the state fire marshal's office on the IDHS website. You click on the link, you fill the form out, and the, the header to it is, if your local jurisdiction or your authority having jurisdiction, which is us, if they do not provide the service, the state will consider doing it. Now, I will offer that you can do that, and then I can talk to our contacts with Bob in the state fire marshal's office to see what that all entails, if it's, because you talked to EMS division, there's 17 different divisions down there. You talked to, maybe you talked to the wrong person, I don't know, but when you said EMS, that's not life state, that's not the fire department. It is, but it's a division, wrong division, where you're looking for the, the building and, uh, Division of Fire and Building Safety.
Steve Jones.
So, I will, no matter what happens, I will work with Mr. January, with Bob, to get the right resolution to this, to figure out who's gonna come and do this. We just, we're just saying that we can't, because we're not gonna take the liability. We did it here, because we're, we're employees of the town of Ameriville, and we were confident with our numbers, and we were, we will stand by these, and we'll take the heat for this. We can't do that for everybody in the town. So, but we will work with you, with the link I provided, we can get the right contacts.
So with Chief Yerga saying that, can we move forward now?
He was talking about that contingency.
That's what I'm asking, with, with Chief Yerga saying that he will help in any way possible to make sure that this gets done, can we move forward now?
Make it a condition of the motion, sure.
Yes. All right. So we can make a condition? Of the motion.
For him getting the occupancy permit, yeah.
Does she make the motion, okay.
So the condition.
Did you want to amend your motion, Counselor She?
Okay, um, I would like to amend the motion to approve on the, on the condition to approve, provided that Chief Yerga helps January get the occupancy level needed to move forward. Is that right?
You'll assist in helping him get it, but it may also fall on him as well.
Mr. Stednoff? Can you, can you help out with the?
It would be, it would be for the fire department to desist.
Hang on, hang on, hang on.
Nice, come on.
Enough. Okay.
Okay, Joe, what?
How was there not any documentation all these years? Shouldn't that be a part of the inspection?
So, Mr. Stednoff, can you help with the motion?
Can you help me with the motion?
I understand this building was set up before rural was a, a town, but how was it able to operate as a business all these years without something being on file about an occupancy, occupancy limit? How's that possible? This may be the first time that this issue's come up.
Uh, the motion. The motion is trying to help him to get this, uh, building open. So it's, it's no need to really, to argue and debate over, we're trying to ensure that Mr. January's building is open and open properly, so nobody can turn around and come back and say he didn't do this or that or the other. So that's what we're trying to do.
So we're trying to get it done, and when you interrupt, we can't get it done, so.
Yeah, that's all we're trying, make sure he's made it open.
Please, guys, no more interruptions, let us get it done, okay?
So it's sealed, like everybody else's is sealed. Okay, get your people, Brian.
Mr. Stednoff, you were assisting with a motion for Counselor She.
The contingency that I was gonna bring in regarding the motion would be that the fire department is going to assist in getting in contact with the fire marshal to assist in a determination of the occupancy. But what I have to say is, if the state refuses to do it, then that's gonna resort, resort back to the owner finding a necessary alternative to that, which would be hiring a private architect to do this. We have to determine the occupancy. The occupancy is most important, as related by our public safety, public safety officials here tonight. So if the state can't determine it or won't determine it, then it has to go back to the owner to make the final determination through a licensed architect.
So what is the motion that I'm saying now? What am I doing?
It's a contingency on the state of Indiana, through the state fire marshal making a determination on the real estate in question, but for, but if, what, Councilman She, it's not that easy, because if the, if the state refuses to do it, what do we do then?
Then, like we said, we go back to square one, but right now, we just need the motion to approve what Chief Yerga just said, on the conditions that he will help assist him in any way possible to get this done. We don't need all of the extra right now, because we know that if the state does not do it, it's gonna fall back on January. We are making this way more difficult than it has to be.
Okay. So it should be contingent upon the occupancy getting done, no matter who does it, like I said.
I make a motion contingent upon the occupancy, whether the state or January does it, motion to approve.
Is that okay with you, Mr. January?
I don't believe you all are giving me a choice, and I think that, um, is one of the reasons that the town is, uh, losing business, but if that's what I have to do, I've got too much invested to turn around right now.
Ms. Leona, do your second stand?
I was second.
All right. Any other questions or comments now on the new motion? So, Jerry, would you come back and call roll for us?
Vice President Neal?
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards?
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton?
Aye.
Councilwoman Uzle?
Yes.
Councilman Pettit?
Adstain.
Councilwoman Hardaway?
Yes.
President Bella?
Aye.
Six in favor, one abstained.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to public comment. Please state your name and address for the record, and we allow three minutes.
Three minutes, people, three minutes. And please, if we're gonna say the same thing, can we just have one person speak from your group? Not everybody repeating the same thing.
Brian Messarch, 201 East 68th Place. Uh, I'd like to introduce the Ameriville Change Agency. Brian Messarch, 201 East 68th Place. I'd like to introduce the Ameriville Change Agency. We are all change agents, we're all standing together, but we're all in line separately to speak, and, uh, some of our members might even yield their time to some of us to move forward, per Robert's rules. Our mission statement is pretty simple, improve resident awareness and restore integrity to the town of Ameriville through common involvement in action. The primary goal of this group is to meet our fellow neighbors, build community spirit, and make new friendships. When you get to know people and they come together, you begin to care about one another. So our goal is to build our community, one relationship at a time. It's unfortunate that most of the people on Ameriville Town Council don't believe in this. We had to form because you decided to ignore us. We're out in the community now, taking action. We're tired of things like abandoned buildings, and unmowed, and unkept lawns, and unkept properties. I've been coming to these meetings for years, abandoned and blighted. What's the report? No report. Oh, we got Blight Court. And then I go to Blight Court, and you know how many fines are issued? None. As a matter of fact, we took down a house that now is overgrown, and there's still no lien issued. The town spent, what, 50 some thousand dollars? Still, in July, still no lien issued against the property owner, which means that property owner does not have any fines against them. It's, it's terrible. So our group has come together, and we're going to be not only a watchdog over what's going on here at council meetings, we're also gonna be out in the town doing positive things to build spirit. One of the things that we'd like to do is recognize Matt Lake, this guy is an absolute all-star. He has helped quite a number of the people in High School Heights, or Merrill Heights, with our, uh, stormwater situation, and we want to make sure that we're not just criticizing people, because Matt Lake, you are wonderful, thank you, for all of your hard effort, and, and your department too, you guys are, are great. One of the, uh, another thing that I'd like to point out that we're going to start is building awareness and starting a petition. If you care about the fire department, 73rd Madison Street is where their memorial should If you care about the fire department, Seventy-third Madison Street is where their memorial should be. It's plain and simple. On May 18th, President Bella offered that spot to them. It's time for some follow-through. Let's give the fire department what they want so that it's a memorial. It doesn't matter if it's a flood zone because statues won't drown. Another thing, a year ago, Mr. Pettit promised Mr. and Mrs. Dunscombe, two of the greatest science teachers the Maryville school system will ever know, for deer crossing signs down at Lincoln Mill Road and Seventy-third. There's a lot of deer down that way. A year has gone by, still no signs. We need to get some safety signs up because people in my ward are concerned about things.
Finish up, Brian. Over time.
The last thing that I'd like to point out is the Maryville Pirates are in regionals versus the Valpo Vikings. It's a home game. Let's go out and support the Maryville Pirates.
David Graff. David Graff, been a Maryville resident for eighteen years, Ward Four. I defer my time.
Amy Scholberger, 6950 Delaware Street. So first, I wanted to give a huge thanks to Mike Lake, or Matt Lake, sorry, for the excellent communication with me during that stormwater project. I know originally it was a big headache for me, and I came up here and I was really upset. We talked. He's done excellent job with communication and working with me and helping fix the yard and everything like that. So I just really wanted to just thank you and just helping me out there and getting things done. So thank you. So to the rest of council, how are, so we got that 1.5 million dollars crossing match grant to be, so how are we planning to use that? What roads, streets are we going to fix? I don't want this money to magically end up in another department because that seems to be a big thing that we keep doing. So I just want to know first, where is that 1.5 million dollars actually going to go to? What roads, what streets?
That'll be in the minutes because Mr. King announced every street and road that we're going to be using that grant money for, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
During his report.
Okay. And mostly been making decisions about our town without getting our input or just playing out, ignoring us, when we're trying to talk to you and telling you, "Hey, can you talk to us about this? Can we have a discussion about this?" You guys just make that decision. So right now, it's time for you guys to just kind of show us that total transparency on everything because we just, at this point, don't trust you guys, okay? So we just ask that we see that total transparency. I know last time I asked about the money and the budget and everything like that, and you said, "Hey, we're going to put it online." I haven't seen that online with the breakdown, unless it's somewhere that's not on the town page. It hasn't appeared. So we just want a total transparency of what's really going on, where our money is going, so it's not being abused. Thank you.
Samuel Payon, 407 West 89th Place. Just curious to see where we're at with that application that was sent downstate that was misrepresenting, or misrepresented about our opposition for the tax levy. So that, I believe, Mr. Griffin shared there was no opposition. So I was just wondering where that status is or which actual document was submitted? The actual one that include our opinion or the one that was, or the not-so-truthful one? So can somebody answer that, please?
Stay after the meeting, and you can talk to Mr. Griffin, sir.
I think a lot of us have public interest in that.
It's not Q and A, guys. I don't know how to relay that.
It's comment section only.
It's public comments.
Public comments.
Okay.
Being fair to everybody.
Okay, so.
And Mr. January could fill you in, too.
Can that be posted on the Q and A section on the website for transparency, since there's-
There is no Q and A section.
Well, can there be? Were there webmasters so we could do that? We want to be transparent, right? Yes or no?
Sure.
Okay, can that be generated, or who's the webmaster?
Mr. Griffin regarding the question.
Can that be posted for the public on the website so we can know?
You could post it if you want. You guys do a lot of posting.
We'll talk directly after this. I'll give you all the information, Sam, because I can answer your question pretty simply.
Everything's been sent down to the state.
Okay. Yeah, it'd be good to maybe have that, maybe think about it for transparency's sake, to have it on the website.
Thanks, Sam.
Chris Holt, 801 West Seventy-third Avenue. I want to start by saying I came to my first town council meeting August of last year. And the reason for my visit was because we needed to save our island there on Seventy-third and Van Buren. First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Minchuck because even through that process, he made us think bigger than we ever thought. It's a beautiful piece. It's a piece of beauty for our community. We could thank for it every time we're out there. But along with that, we had a conversation about the Great Sock Trail sign. And as you know, we've been pretty quiet on it. But at that time, we were promised that we would have a replica. We were also told at that time that quote-unquote, "It was moved for the historical district." Well, I have some news for you all. It was never moved. When it was hit, it sat in the Historical Society for a year. No one knew where it was at except for the Historical Society. And Joe Berger put his own money into it to rectify it. He put it in there. That's why you haven't heard anything, because I was not going to ask a private citizen who put his own money into it. And by the way, Joe was there when that sign was actually put in. When they had the opening ceremony on it, he was there. That's the kind of guy I want in this community. That's the kind of guy I want to lead. We were misrepresented all along that the town council could do something for us on that, which never transpired at all. So it was completely misrepresented. That all ties in to the mistrust that the public is starting to feel for the town council. When we look at the application and see there's no objections, 297 people were in the room that night, a couple hundred more couldn't get in the building. I think that's opposition, folks. I don't understand how that document could say there was no opposition. That is completely wrong. That is not taking care of the community who put you in office. Another concern of mine is the loss of services that we're starting to see.
Please finish up, sir.
We don't have a town court. We don't have animal control anymore. And every time we're turning around, we're saying, "We don't have the money." Well, we're starting to realize that it's not on accident. It's by purpose. We understand that there's crises being perpetrated on the community and then telling us that we don't have the money. It's not a secret anymore, folks.
Pablo Payan, 8031 Massachusetts Street. So I'm a real estate investor. I have several rental properties in Gary, Michigan City. I just purchased a two-unit in Michigan City. The house was built in 1890, so it's an old house. And I was thinking about investing in Maryville, buying rental properties in Maryville. What if I run into this problem? Documents are missing. What then? I'm going to sit with this property three, six months, eight months, can't rent it out, losing money? Exactly, this happened in Eric January. When his building was occupied prior to this, people were using it. There was no question about capacity. Was it because police was in there, or fire department, or councilmen? I don't know. But now it's a problem. And I find it hard to believe there's not one document in here or in the county regarding this building. I just find it absurd. I mean, as a businessperson, this would be devastating. And to the rest of the people, I mean, this could happen to you. You know? There's how many people here, and they said no objection to the tax increase? They circled this. They said, "Was there any opposition or objection to the excess levy appeal?" No, they circled. They circled no. They submitted this, tried to submit it, well, submitted to the state without Eric January's signature. They said, "Were any public comments received in opposition or support of the excess levy appeal?" They said no. Mr. Griffin says he's a man of integrity, but circled no. That's not real integrity to me. So next time you guys vote, realize who you guys are voting for. You know, do your research, you know?
Moving on tonight to announcements.
Darian Collins, 2505 West 65th Avenue. I guess I'm not opposed to the tax increase. If we need it, if we need it, for bona fide things for the town, I'm not opposed to it. I don't know if we need it because I haven't listened to a presentation. What should have been done is that each one of you should have called a meeting in your ward, and you should have talked to the residents in your ward and said, "We need to do this. It's not popular, but we need to do this, and this is why we need to do this, and this is what is going to benefit the town and each one of you." When my son comes to me for my money, I want to know why. So he has to tell me, "Ma, I want to get a new Playstation for me and Quentin." Now, I may not like that, but at least he's given me an explanation of what he wants to do to borrow some money from me. You guys should have said, you should have had town halls. That's what they do. You get a town hall, and you talk to people and you find out, "This is unpopular, but we need to do this, and we need buy-in." You don't leave it for public comment and ram it down people's throats or up their butts. You don't do that. So I'm not saying, I've been here 23 years. I'm not saying I'm against paying more money if it's going to benefit the town. I'm not saying I am. But I'm saying it should have been explained in a better way to those of us that are going to pay it. So the next time around, when election season comes, people are going to remember this. And the next time around, when you do this, have town halls and talk to us like we mean something and like our opinion means something. That's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'd like to think I'm a friend of the town council, which I am. As old as I am, I wish at times I would have a hearing aid so I could turn it down tonight with all the negative comments. One thing, this is, I'd like to say this is the greatest town in Indiana, regardless of what people say about it. But in getting to Mr. January's situation, fortunately, I was around when the American Legion building was built. And at that time, they didn't have all the regulations and the stuff that they have now. You hired a contractor, and he came in. You told him what you wanted. You put a roof on it, sectioned it off. If the roof leaked in two years, then you went after the contractor. You didn't go to anybody else. Now, as a member of the Maryville Historical Society and also a member of the American Legion, when I found out that the American Legion was going to close, it was going defunct, I tried to rescue a lot of the stuff in the building. Talking to the officers, there's still a couple of them around. But all the stuff that was in that building, the records and all that stuff, was boxed up. And there was an individual, a lady, and I don't know her name. I don't know much about her, but anyhow, she got most of that stuff, and to my knowledge, it's destroyed. I would have liked to got some of the old documents from when they had the charter and all that stuff for the Maryville Historical Society, but I guess it wasn't meant to be. So the people that are trying to blame it on the town for not having records and that, the stuff that was there is lost. Thank you.
Mr. President, I have one comment.
Oh, go ahead.
Chief Yerga, do you mind stepping to the podium? I have a question for you. Sorry to make you walk.
Go ahead.
The property on Seventy-third, are you guys ready for that yet?
Are we ready for what?
The property on Seventy-third to make a memorial. Are you ready for it?
No, we're not financially ready for it, no.
Okay.
But when we are, we'll be-
You will come before the council?
Sure.
Alright. That's all I have. Thank you.
So actually, we looked into that already, Chief, didn't we, back and forth?
Yeah.
Joe involved.
Yeah.
The town and the fire department is all one entity, basically.
Everything the fire territory has-
Whatever you want to do with the property, we gave you permission to do so. We don't need a motion. We don't need an ordinance. We don't need a big hoopla blah. We just said, "If you want to do something with the property, you know, go ahead." You just can't build a building on a floodplain.
That's true. Everything the fire territory has is titled the town of Maryville, correct?
Yeah, so it's all one big happy family, so.
Right.
I think we got Matt Lake involved because of the creeks there, so. There's nothing to really do, Brian, so it's all done. You should feel good about that.
Thank you, Chief.
I have a question. We're talking about Seventy-third and Madison?
Yes.
On the, which corner?
Where the pizza place used to be.
Across from Speedway.
I just wanted to make sure.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Ian Davidson-Dugan, I'm president of the Maryville FOP. I just want to make it clear that right now, yes, I'm standing here in uniform. However, I am only speaking on behalf of the Fraternal Order Police Lodge 168. There's been some comments tonight regarding the old Legion property. I just want to make it abundantly clear that the FOP had no hand in the actual operation and running of that organization and that building. They were kind enough to allow us to use their facility, most of the time at no cost, and that was our only involvement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next council meeting will be on November 26th at 6:30. The RDC meeting will be Tuesday, November 26th at 6:15. And remember, the tree lighting celebration and contest are December 6th at the Dean and Barbara White Community Center.
I'm sorry, Mr. President. May I make one informational statement? There have been several comments asking about the levy appeal paperwork not being online. And I would simply like to state that on the Maryville website, under the Residents dropdown menu, the 2025 Budget Proposal title is on the right side. Upon clicking there, there are four choices below in blue. The Maryville Emergency Levy Appeal is the document that was filed downstate. Page four is the page with the answers about objections. And at questions three and four, there are notations about referring to why the answers are the way they are and referring further into the document for additional information.
Okay, so now I was not going to read this, but you are deceptive. That's why you were disbarred as an attorney. I was not going to read this. I was quiet, but since you came up here and said this, this is something that I got. This is something that I got. Please forward me your editor's information. You have done another great job of telling the one side of the story that is inaccurate and biased. This is me sending the email to the Northwest Indiana Times. How can you have stated that January's, quote-unquote, "January's characterization" differs from the text of the filing? What the town manager and the consultant wrote wasn't questions. In other words, what the state wrote in the text of the filing, they answered no to the questions that the state asked, and those responses are lies. What is written underneath each question isn't what the state used to determine whether or not to deny or approve an excess levy appeal. The actual questions are. Answering yes, which is the truth, would have hindered the massive tax hike. You got played again. That's what I said to Alex. This was his response. When I sent him the actual document, this is his response. "Hi, Mr. January. Thank you for bringing this to my attention. After the meeting, Mr. Griffith showed me a printout of the filing that did include the financial advisor's notes, but did not show the no answer circled." In other words, it was a blank page. Answered circled, see attached. Answered circled, see attached, and I can show you the attachment. I see from your attachment that that was not the version you saw. I'm going to figure this out, how, how this happened, and I will get the article updated to reflect this clarification. So when I was called a liar last, at the last meeting, this is what this man is addressing. And what you're basically trying to tell the public is that what, what newspapers saw and what you all provided them is correct, is not correct. I have the printout, I can show you what Alex Steele, Andrew Steele at Northwest Indiana Times showed me. That was completely inaccurate, and you're providing misleading information. What the state got is the actual stuff. So to answer your question, Pablo, yes, they got the stuff that I sent them, they got the stuff. I had to submit the stuff that they, or the original, not the levy appeal, but the actual budget. I didn't submit the levy appeal because the stuff was inaccurate. I didn't sign off on it, so they sent it anyway via email. And my whole point in this is that I've been mischaracterized as somebody that's lying and misrepresenting the truth, whereas they're presenting false information to the press and trying to make me look bad. I'm a CPA, been licensed for 30 years. When bankers see my stuff, they take it to the bank and rely on it. My integrity is worth way more than any money anybody could ever provide me. I'll never compromise on that type of stuff. But to get up here and make it seem like I'm telling the untruth, that is completely inaccurate. You should sit down.
Mr. January? I was not addressing this to imply anything about anything that you've said today. I wanted the residents to know. Excuse me, I listen to you.
No, no, no. I, I will let her talk, but I was not going to say anything about it. I had this stuff, I could have, and, and I could have ignited the flame, but I didn't.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. President. Motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
We're done.
We're done.